The May 2nd, was it May 2nd? May 2nd meeting of the action plan board to order. And we will start with the approval of minutes for the April 18th meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'm second.
All in favor? And you will be voting tonight, Dennis.
I will be.
Only eight minutes. Always I like to have a full house.
Who's second?
Gavin's second.
And I'm standing down. Yeah, I'm standing down and standing because I wasn't here.
New business, under new business, we have so many. Ken gave me a bunch of them.
I'm okay if you want to table that one after our business.
Okay. We will table new business until... We'll put it up at the end after old business, okay? So first on our agenda, Mr. Boise, Mark, come on down. This is all nine yards. Site plan review, retail store.
Basically, I just followed your instructions and had the site plan amended to include the write-up we had along separate piece of paper.
If you read under notes.
That's my... One is up there.
No, no, if you read under notes here, you'll find the discussion we had with Mark about putting things on to do this. And I've read through these and they seem to follow the letter that you received from Ken.
The memo from my book?
From my book, no, no, exactly. And I think we can see there's some grading now on this. So taking from there, we have questions.
I guess just by kind of wondering where are we with stormwater management?
In what respect?
On just your plans to deal with the stormwater that's going to be created by having this site.
It was mentioned before that we're going to have our wells at each corner. The building is going to be verded. That's going to take care of the entire roof. You have natural vegetation all around the driveway. In fact, you guys were up here, so you saw it. It's a well-drained area.
The gutters on the roof, those coming into a drywell?
Yes. They'd be one each corner of the large. Yep.
And I don't have the final revision up here, but I would think just as that drainage comes around from the north going to the west side, maybe just the smaller detention areas where they're coming down into these two areas, just a swale-type area. And then you'd want to divert before it gets to the septic and bring that down into the two diversion areas. Just a place for water to sit, either percolate down or by itself a little time.
I mean, if you require that, we can. It's naturally smooth, so that's going to happen anyways.
I think it's a matter of making sure that it happens, and that saves you a lot of charge too. We don't want anything backing up into any of the surrounding area or into the building. So, and that's just a matter of making sure.
Well, we totally would make sure that we drain the water back to the building.
But also you don't want the water to end up on top of your leach field. I guess is what I was thinking about when we were looking at how your leach field was like down here, your septic and stuff. I mean, the last thing you want is the water coming off and on top of your leach field all the time because it never had the chance to.
To drain.
Yeah. Where it says it's supposed to go now. Some people say that, some people say that.
Is the pink box the leach field or the tank?
It's the leach field. Tank is in the corner of the building.
Is it on the plan?
No, for some reason it's not.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't overlooking.
Turn it again.
Turn it again. I'll hold the button, I'm sorry. So the tank's going right there.
Yeah.
Eight feet from that wall, eight feet from that wall, right in this square.
And all the water usage will be probably in that front area called office or something like that?
Yes.
Hand sink or something on the back side.
Yep, that's it, right on that wall actually.
On that wall.
That hand sink is going to be right on this wall right here.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're going to have a drain for your... I don't know if I can say it, but for all your runoff, like off the roof and stuff, you know, you're going into the...
Yeah, that's what we were saying before.
And then it's going to drain someplace else.
It's a drywell that accepts the water.
It's just going to sit there.
One on both sides?
One on each corner.
Yeah.
So four corners.
Four corners?
Yes, it's a long building.
So...
How about for the...
I guess, excuse me.
Oh, no, go for it.
Is this enough to contain all the water? How does that normally work?
I think it's a small enough project that the board could look at it and by consensus agree with it versus having a 25- or 50-year storm done by an engineer. To me, adding the drywells to the plan and the detention area in that southwest corner would be adequate.
Okay.
To mitigate the stormwater.
Yep, just one there.
And that area would be off of the yellow area.
Correct, yeah.
Down in here.
Down in that corner there. That seems like that's going to be most of the stormwater from the north and the west is going to come around there.
Yeah.
And just a divot-type area to contain that stormwater.
Are you going to direct all the stormwater from the parking lot into that same area?
Yeah, the north side's coming westerly, makes the corner. Seems to be pulling right through the center and then starts rolling by that proposed storage area. And everything on the south is coming down there, so you're missing the front third roughly, which is going to come to that septic. If you had a swale to pick it up at the perimeter of the parking area to pick it up into that. And like you said, it's heavily vegetated from there, you know, it's a couple hundred feet to the neighbor's property, so it really is not that far.
Right, just big area.
Yep.
Looks very compact here, very different when you stay.
Yeah.
But like I was saying before, I mean even, even like your leach field, if you can somehow make sure the water doesn't get there, it's going to save you a lot of water aggravation down the road, that's for sure. You know what I mean? Last thing you want, your leach field long because of all what you've put into it.
Just a swale between the edge of the parking lot and beginning of the septic.
Yeah, something like that.
And it'll pick up anything from the office area of the building, that whole parking lot area, all the way down through.
I mean, it isn't like, I mean, you're not talking like a six-foot ditch in the front.
No, no.
Small swale. It just vegetated normally. I wouldn't even think we'd need reprafting of anything.
When we think about the perimeter plantings to public that kind of thing to just... Because we like to have that five feet between the parking area and the edge of the building anyway.
Yeah.
We like having foundation planting sort of speed in there.
Well, I think you had said...
It's a kind of a work area all around the building.
Well, talking about when you park the cars, you walk in the door.
Well, I haven't yet.
Didn't you say you were going to be putting something in there?
The brown spots, the wording is small, but that's what that says, proposed gardens, proposed gardens on each side of that.
Like you're saying, the writing is small.
Oh, in the front? You got it in the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we were just looking.
I can barely read it on the big picture here.
Look, did you see that wrap around the whole building?
No, that wouldn't make sense to put that all around the whole building because it's a work site for us.
I'm trying to look at that cross-section that shows where your overhead doors are. But as far as I recall, you have a couple overhead doors, there was one here and one here and one here.
One in the back.
And maybe one here.
Yep.
So all this area in between the doors and around the corners and such where you have those detention areas would all be ideal areas to re-vegetate. Anywhere you wouldn't be driving, you know, driving into the building, you'd have that five feet to do something with. You had a good design of the...
I've looked at a lot of buildings in town. I don't see anything like that in town vegetation against the cement. Again, it's a work area for us. We got trailers and trucks parked up right up against the building and...
Well, there's only ordinance asked for the five feet between the building and the parking area anywhere. I think it says five to 10 feet. I got the look of it.
It is up there with cars parked, the parking area to the customers.
Right, but this is all considered the parking area to the gravel apron, which we're still trying to figure out the 100%... Yeah, like on this side, you've got the seven proposed parking spots, like in your original plan. You have seven proposed spots over here, so all this is game for parking, so...
That was a mistake and should never have been on the map. Why you change to that?
Well, but that's the use of the gravel area is for parking, basically, impossible storage as well. I tried to... What is...
I think really the intent, the ordinance was just in the front area where they've got the proposed gardens versus the around the whole building. And the real intent was the buffer between the building and the highway, which he's... Obviously, you're going to clear up the driveway, but the rest of it, he's just going to thin and leave a tremendous...
We're clear on that.
Oh, yeah.
We got that done. And my thought, or my understanding was boats are going to be inside. And any of the docks or things like that will be on the outside for storage.
Some will be on the outside, some will be on the inside. It just depends how the season is.
Right.
What season it is.
And your exterior storage is to the rear of the building?
Right, your exterior, well, getting the exterior storage would be...
The excess, yeah.
Yeah. Towards...
And it is in the back?
In the back.
Right.
So not blocking doors, but any other space you have. And not blocking the doors, but any other open space that you have, you may use for storage.
Right.
That's what I understood.
I guess I don't understand the difference between parking and storage of a parked mobile unit, perhaps.
And I think when I looked at the vegetated area, I was thinking of the storefront side versus to have a plant on the rear side for aesthetics wouldn't be. I could see for stormwater quality issues or something like that, but not for aesthetics.
Well, it would look better when you were back there.
It would. He's been a delivery guy.
But he is a delivery guy, or one of his sons are going to be working there, not looking at flowers.
Well, they better not be admiring.
So where would your display areas be for your docks that you would, when you had prospective customers coming in and say, "Oh, I want to get a dock for great ease"?
We'll have a few inside. We'll have a few inside the showroom. And we'll have to see how the yard finishes up, but we'll have a spot or two somewhere in the yard where we have a few docks set up with some accessories on it. But again, we'll have, you know, in early spring when we get our tractor-trailer truck loads, there'll be a line of docks so people can see all of the framework and look at all the different sizes. Probably along the north side, if I'm looking at this map right. Our work area probably going to be right here because that's where the two garage doors is up. The garage doors are. So this is going to be our work area primarily, and this is to get around the building and get help for vehicles that are large.
How wide is that work area?
How wide?
How wide is your work area around the building?
Uh, 50 feet at the minimum. You know, I'm not sure, you know, that might be a little bigger right there, but you've got this corner of the building, so...
On the sides of your building?
Minimum 50 feet, yeah.
In your work area, you look at, what do you think, 20 feet, 30 feet?
As far as what?
Well, you said you could use some of that for a work area.
I'm sure, I'm sure this whole area will be used for work area. We'll probably have some docks right here where people pull in. They don't have a pool pot to look at them. You know, we thought about having maybe a little, we have a little beach area in our house, in our house that we set up, put a dock on it. We might want to do that, I don't know. We've got to check out safety and the fence, or not a fence, but a gate and all that. But we've got to figure out if we want to take a chance on having still a lot, so...
I guess my, where I was going with that was, at least this is how I understood it anyway, that you're going to be able to go all the way around the building with trucks and whatever, sort of like a fire truck. And if you've got that 40 or that 50 feet on that side of the work area, then they can't drive all the way around the building.
Well, it's never going to be closed off so nobody can drive around it. There's always going to be a path for our vehicles because we want to get around the building as well. That'll never be closed off.
No, no, I appreciate that it won't be closed off, but normally when you have like a road that ambulance or rescue or, you know, a fire, there's a minimum thing that you can't put nothing in. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
And that's why I was wondering how wide a spot that was. And if you're going to put docks on display, which, you know, on the edge, like you said, when you get your new docks, you know, half a dozen different ones or whatever, and then you have your work area there too, then you're limiting to, like you say, you can get your truck through that. But it's a big difference between you pick up truck or whatever, the boat and the fire truck.
What's the width requirement?
That's something I'm not sure.
I mean, yeah.
Would have to look.
20 feet. Your fire lanes come into play with the size of the building and sprinklers and stuff like this, so this didn't meet the size of it. Once you guys accept the plan, we'll bring it to the fire chief and get his update on it too as well, but...
What is the size?
About 20 feet.
The building?
Yeah, the building.
What's the size of the main part of the building?
No, the required.
Oh, it's, I think, 20,000.
20,000.
And there's trade-offs to go bigger. Once you start bringing the fire lanes around, you can go bigger without the sprinkler system and things like that. It depends on the use and the type of construction.
I mean, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench into things. My, what I'm trying to do is when it's all done and all, everything is talked about and laid out and everybody's on the same page, that's all.
Yep. I have no issue with knowing that there'll be space for any kind of town vehicle to run through there if they need to. And now, I mean, now that you're bringing it up, I mean, we keep it in mind as well, you know what I mean?
Well, conversation is how you end up in the right place in the end.
Hopefully.
Going back to what Gavin was saying though, it does say it's part of the paragraph under the, which goes down and then will have between the building and the parking area.
You've got a living, yeah?
Right, but the next sentence says, "Planting should be provided along the building edge, particularly where building facade consists of long or unbroken walls." On page 62.
So the only long unbroken wall, well, they're actually all broken, the only with your longest wall would be, well, that's sort of what would be the south wall?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you got a garage door, right?
At the, towards the end of it. The southeast corner of that. There's a door there, but that's...
How wide is your door, 20 feet?
No, 14.
14? And how, and your building's what, 100?
This section here is 100, yeah, 102.
102.
So you've got 86 feet that's not a door on the, on the south side.
Yep.
And then on the north side, you've got 74 or 72 feet. Because you've got two doors as well.
Two doors.
No, that's incorrect. You have 23-foot space and there's a door in that 23-foot space, and then you come over 6 feet and you get another 14-foot door. So 20, 23 is 43, less than 100.
So you've got about 60, 57 feet on that side that you could put some plantings in there.
50 and change.
Yeah. And the biggest thing on the south side.
Again, there's nothing here that's aesthetics for customers. This is completely work. This is not a strip mall where people are walking down the side.
Well, this is to help the stormwater management and to work with the site. I mean, this is work. It's not just for aesthetics. And that's why it tends to work with this. Just having more vegetation improves the site.
But on the other hand, the guys in the drywall are taking care of the stormwater so it's not going down into the vegetation.
Well, they still have full parking lot area otherwise, you know.
But that's all leaving from the building, nothing's coming down.
Nothing coming to the building.
Right.
It's all smoke, the waste, all the...
Well, I think it's just one of the things that the ordinance suggests that I would like to see and I don't know if it has to be on this plan, but if we're going to be adding some stormwater notes, I think we should put in some vegetated areas because it is a large, impervious surface unbroken in this depiction, so there's two small front gardens and... That's just my opinion.
No, I don't, I actually don't see gardens per se, you know.
I don't know what you mean.
Well, I'm not expecting you to plant gardens around. You have two gardens in the front. And I have just got a good feeling that Mrs. Boise is going to be planting some very nice things for you in that little garden.
Chardonnay type?
Yeah, you know, and, you know, in the fall, she's probably going to put some mungs in there or something, you know, something that looks nice. I can't see anything of any formal nature being done on the other side of the house, of the house, of the building, since we do have the drainage there going into, if we have the swales and we have everything running off. But I will say, on the other hand, if, you know, you've got some bushes up there, there's nothing that says you can't plop this one in the ground while you're working over here or that one over there, just not for the aesthetics, but to help with any water issues that you might have. You know, I, I think with all the drainage on it...
I don't see much about the drainage in the notes. That's kind of what started it.
Well, that's, that's what's got you thinking.
Yeah, the well-narched part, I mean, I was thinking about it anyway.
Right, right. Well, I understand where you're coming from.
As Ken said, if you do what Ken suggests, that takes care of pretty much any problem child that he feels he's looking at. I mean, it's just, I know what's going to happen. We're going to put that in and get destroyed. So, I mean, I'm thinking from two points of view, so...
What's going to be destroyed?
The vegetation. The vegetation can get destroyed because...
On the side?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm going to look at my money being wasted, that's all.
Mike, do you have...
We're not asking for, I mean, we're not talking about a lot of financial, we're talking about vegetation. Could be grassed any moment.
Hope you can see.
Do you have anything? I'm just, I'm going through page after page, not seeing. Do you have anything in here on the drainage and the drywells?
We may want the bigger plan, the drainage. So what I had for notes to just put on the final plan was the drywall, drywell location on the four points, a cross-section of what the drywall is going to be, the swale that comes along the south side between the septic and the parking area, and then the detention area down in this corner. Unless Dana has a better place to put them or something like that. He should be more knowledgeable.
Could you show me the last one? I had my head down.
So that swale will run down through here and then a detention area right in this area.
You have certain sizes of those or?
That'll be up to Dana.
Okay.
And then just noting one handicap spot in the front.
Should the gate be on that too? No, the knock boxes refer to on there.
Yeah.
Well, the knock box is going to be on the building.
Oh, okay. One of the things that I've been doing, which I think more than what's going, what Yoli's thinking, is I went over to Shapley, driving by, a storage place, I looked at the one on 109, Parkers. And even though any of those can be accessed by the street, we know a four-foot fence isn't going to stop anybody who really wants to get into a facility. They all have gates across their driveway. And I think it would be prudent to have, have it again. People can go through the woods, we know that, but any place where you can make it more difficult in the long haul is going to save you money, you know.
Some of those other facilities that you mentioned, you always see the tractor-trailer out on the street and they're down there with the forklift on the busy road and loading the deliveries. So it'd be great. We won't be having that here.
Listen, that'd be wonderful here. That won't happen. But I think having, you know, when you're not there, you know, at the end of the day, the gate is closed. And because the other thing I see this being, and I always hate to say it on TV, is the area's going to be open. There's a nice driveway. You know, kids on ATV go up there.
It was our intention. I didn't know that I needed to have it on the map. It was our intention to figure out what kind of nice fencing we wanted as we saw.
We talked about that earlier, gates cameras.
I think, you know, to me, I think gates would be very difficult. I think fencing would be very difficult down by the road.
Oh, that'd be crazy.
You know, and it would be, you could end up with some sort of Taj Mahal gates or something. That would be wild. But, but a good gate would be...
Suggestion?
A good suggestion. And then again, which I guess you've talked about cameras for your own comfort.
Yeah, we're planning on doing that on...
And no, early on, we talked about the lighting around the building. We all downwashed.
Right.
With a shield, we would all down.
Except over the, you know, working garage doors would be a plug light. We had that, yeah.
Yeah.
That was written in the...
So four drywells for the gutters to dump into, a cross-section of how the drywells have constructed. The swale running on the south detention area and handicap ramp, handicap...
So you just need it somewhere on here.
Yeah, just mark it, and then we'll know preferred parking. I think the plan's adequate enough. He can give us the updated one between now and then if the board wants to set a public hearing.
I'll go to Dana tomorrow like I've done every time I've come here.
Yeah.
So he doesn't have to spend too much time.
The only other question I have that, and I know, Mike, you've got no control over this, but things are bought and sold all the time. You're very well-known property. If, I mean, he's, he says that this is what he's going to do with the property and all this stuff, and, you know, I believe whatever he's telling me. I believe whatever he's telling me. But if I went and I bought this tomorrow and I decided that, uh, I'm gonna be storing, uh, fifty bolts on the outside, um, is, is that something that, if that happens down the road?
Yeah, so no, for the plans, change ownership, they come back to the board.
Read number four when you're there.
It's actually on there.
All right.
So, and a lot of that is just concerned with the board's comfort level with the existing owner and then a new owner comes from a national company and you, you just don't have a.
You don't have a comfort level at all.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was just.
He's in here, your company.
Now, I said it and now you said it, now I remember.
Well, we did give you the whole plan inside to read, so.
Especially for the old man.
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are two point five, I think I need a five point two or something. Would, uh, everyone agree to a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. What are we gonna go in?
We're trying to calculate it, to see if we can get it.
Let me check the requirements.
We do have a public hearing for the Timber Harvest on the sixteenth already, that should be fairly easy.
Do we have, do we have the other on that same?
We will update that, I think we're all set on those.
Okay.
We're all set.
So that'll just be bang, bang, bang on those and go up good.
We have to notify the occupant, we can't really, the occupant, on them.
Well, it's within five hundred feet, but.
Maybe across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Who's across the street?
We have one on our side, just up the hill.
Just up the hill.
If it's five hundred feet, then, then he's one, and then Elias is one, and I don't know if anybody else is.
So potentially, maybe I do this one the same time, do a public hearing.
Right.
Usually the newspapers is tough on it.
We have to publish the notice ten days in advance.
This is sixteen, can't be got close to that one name, since it's the second.
If, if we, if we have the dates, since we're having one on the sixteenth, that would be nice. If we fit in the, you know, again, that's one of those things, our hands and eyes sucks, we've got a newspaper, that's.
I'll pay the extra fee to get it in the paper.
It's not the fees. It would have to, almost have to be done tomorrow, I don't know.
Should I, um, enjoy a ten hour session?
It's never a waste of time.
Okay, try.
Yeah, cause then I go, I can have it in the.
I possibly can have it in time, I just can't even get it in the smart shopper. Ooh, maybe by Saturday?
It's, a lot of it's the cutoff date of the papers.
Uh-huh. I don't, I, I don't think we get it in the newspaper, but, but it's up to you if you want us to try. You want us to see what we can do. Can we, can we see what we can do, try tomorrow and Mark, if we can do it? We will let you know if we can't because of the time constraints?
Yeah, it'll be the first weekend, the first week.
Then you will get a phone call from us too, but we'll see if everything works, um.
What was the June date? It'd be the sixth.
It would be the?
Yeah.
The sixth?
Yeah.
It would be June sixth.
And how does it work, so whenever that meeting is held, you know, people come out and shoot us, or they say, great?
Exactly, exactly.
We've been through the shooting once in another town, so.
Okay, well, this is a very nice town, you know.
So what happens at, at that point?
Then, um, at that point, you get signatures, uh, we, we go from working to, okay.
Okay. Yeah, we get, we get public input, if, if something comes from the public that, oh, jeez, we didn't think of that, then we tend to, uh.
I understand, what I'm saying is.
But then, what you're saying, what is the next step after that?
Do I get a?
Luckily, we approve of that.
Likely we approve.
But not necessarily.
Yeah.
Do I get something to give to the bank?
For the conditional use to be approved and then I can issue a building permit because the condition use has been approved.
Okay, that's, because they want that in order for us to, to see with the loan, so that's what's killing us right now.
Right, yeah, yeah. And it, it would be very nice if we could just say, okay, here you go, but.
No, I get it.
We have, we have as many handholds or restrictions as you do, except we don't have to go to the bank, so.
For, for clarity, when I speak to the bank, what's the timeframe in having the permits that we're talking about? So I can tell the bank?
Worst case, be thirty days.
It takes thirty days to get those permits after the meeting?
We're thirty days behind now.
You're all lying.
So thirty days from a completed application.
Okay.
Hopefully, and that, you asked for worst case scenario, right? I think I heard worst case, yeah?
Yeah, he's a worst case scenario.
We would ideally like to hopefully jump yas ahead.
Okay.
Cause they'd be clearing it easier. Um, would the board like to accept the application that's completed and set the public hearing for the worst case scenario in June and hopefully the May sixteenth day?
Maybe they could just make the motion just a second.
Application instead of public hearing?
Assume, assume it can be amended.
I'd like to make a motion that, um, we include foundation plantings on the plan, um, five feet between the gravel area and the building for approximately fifty feet length of the building, can be on any of the sides. Do I add a second to my motion?
Do we hear a second on the motion? Hearing no second, I believe, motion, motion fails.
All right, let's break shut. All right, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept, uh, well, we don't have the stormwater on here.
You're accepting the application.
You're accepting the application.
Okay, I'll accept the application.
Second, okay, any discussion further? All in favor? Passes?
What was that, what was it?
It is five.
Five zero?
Yeah. Donovan is nine.
I'm writing.
He's writing. Six, six oh. He was busy, passes. Good, um, we've accepted your application now, I think in theory, what we will do is we're gonna jump on Brenda's shoulders and say, please see what you can find out. If we can make it happen, we will, if we can't.
I get it, just check in after the day tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then they'll let you know and then you can tell us how far out Dana would be with the plan.
And Dana, with the plan, if everything works right, we, we will, uh, we'll see you in two weeks.
I do advertise the papers, I mean, I did call and ask them to.
I can order it in general tributes, usually Portland Press has a Sunday edition, I can get it in the classifieds. That covers the newspaper aspect, but then I put it in the smart shopper because that's what everybody reads.
Right. Am I all set?
You're all set, thank you, Mark, have a nice evening. Okay, next, open, open business. Brenda? Whitman, uh, daycare. Chris too? Just my own, um, refreshment memory, who was on the sidewalk? There's.
You were not.
I was not, no.
I was.
You were.
I was not.
You were not, and Yoli, you were. And actually, you were on with us, Brenda.
I was not.
And you were not.
She was a dealer.
Absolutely.
And you what?
Yeah.
Do you react to it when money?
She wanted a wrap.
I wanted sheepskin. Is that true?
Exactly. Yes, she was, it was probably, it was probably one of the best sidewalks we had.
It was.
It was, it, this year, um. Sorry, you almost gave me a heart attack.
Oh, yeah, they guys came like.
That way, we're usually, we could be an hour either way.
Five.
You should know.
That's me with all my kids, I'm always like.
Okay, so any questions from anybody who discussed what's going, um, or observations? Anybody who felt bored? I will reply.
I could just, um, ask you again about the scale of your operation, how many kids are playing, have any? How many cars you expect, uh, the hours, that kind of, just a general, I know it's in here, but.
So as of now, um, my plan is, um, to be small because I wanna be the only one that is, um, employed by myself. So it would be a small group of kids through the state with my four kids, one kid does count. So I probably would only take on as of now, no more than four kids, what the state will let me do on my own.
One of your own children counts as?
As, um.
A daycare?
Yeah.
Child?
That would be my little one, River. So, um, with that being said, my goal is to always kind of be small right now, I'm not sure how big I'm gonna grow, um. Um, what I do grow, though, I mean, I would like to run out, I don't wanna make my home like the main daycare. So when it comes to how many cars in the parking lot and stuff, it's like, they're probably in a small daycare right now for probably a few years, uh, from what I can handle, not really hiring more people unless.
So you don't want another caregiver?
Not at the moment, no.
At the moment?
Not for another couple of years coming, just kind of wanna do my own thing, you know, just, um, have a handful of kids. I know, um, before and after school care is really needed and active right now, just with the one daycare. So, um, I've been kind of working around that now legally, without the state, um, what I can hold legally.
I, I'd rather not.
Yeah.
Thank you. You have your children, so that's okay. I'll tell you, I, I did have a concern and it was the driveway. Um, one of, one of our workers backing out, I backed out, next car backed out and had to do a quick stop and pull back in, and that is a big concern. Looking at pictures, we thought perhaps, you know, you could do one of these pull in, back out, pull back, a three-point turn.
Okay, look, my truck won't be there, so you pull in to there, back up, won't come.
Well, that's what we thought, but we really questioned that.
That's why when I did read the driveway after the fire, we, we pulled out there so people don't have to back out.
Yeah. Because.
And it's against a lot of backdoor onto the side road.
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, I, I actually.
Did you look into the customers?
Hmm?
You looked into that?
I looked into that.
Yeah.
However, you can be held responsible if you hit something, cause they can say you did not, um, take, do caution, but I looked it up, six ways of Sundays and it said, it is not illegal. While it is not illegal, you can be held liable.
Yeah.
Backing on a state road, a main road, uh, any kind of roadway you wanna think of, I was very surprised.
I just thought it was a state road.
Yeah, no, it was, it's any, I, I looked at, um, and I could not, I could not find anything saying, um, it was. And, and again, that made me a little bit nervous and so I did wanna ask you about, um, the property, the road. Jeez, I wish you could go into your basement, you know, that would be perfect, drop off on the back road and go up and come around. But, um, a, a drop off on that right away. Yeah. Is that something that could be worked, Chris?
I could talk to Steve, okay, cause I think it belongs to him, cause I know there's another right, there's a right way here and there's another right way up just on that little line, but that's, that's not, but I can talk to Steve about it. Let's see if it's right there.
But there's only one car or a pickup though, not more than just one, how does that make it that hard with, you know?
It, it's not a ma- matter of you can or can't, it's a matter of safety.
Oh, no, 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 I, I know, I'm just saying that there's just one car, um, you pull in, back out, one, that's not a problem. I could see, is that where you guys are coming, if there's more than one car?
Turn around, so it's something like that, but that's the turnaround, if they pull like this, this is twenty-eight hour and then back up to where my truck is.
Right. I mean, maybe it would even be helpful if, um, you throw your truck out, but you make, you have a piece of paper in any of your daycare parents and it has driveway directions on it, you know? Pull in, you know, car, the front of the car is pointing towards the steps so then you can back out and drive down the driveway onto the street.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a very, uh, and it's a dangerous road.
It's so crazy, it's twenty-five miles an hour and you're right, like, you know, that being.
I see buses going by at forty-five, fifty.
Right, and, and the, and the, the other thing that gave me pause was the, um, shrubbery and, and the little trees that were just up from you a little bit and they didn't even, they weren't even bloomed yet.
They're there, ain't.
And, uh, yeah.
I'll trim them back a couple times when you want.
It's not, oh, we don't wanna know that either.
But then again, though, if you look at it, the state should take care of that because it's, that's the front end of the state could take in, take care of that if they wanted to, just as much as these trees right here.
I think they did one year. I think yourself, the state come by clipping them one year, I was like, oh, that's cool.
You know, that, that actually falls on, falls on the, would've, could've shut up.
I mean, I can talk to the neighbor and ask him.
You know?
And you tried them on, nobody was living there.
Right.
Again, they're not your property, I'm just saying, they create a, a hazard. That, that was one of the things I, I saw and I was concerned about.
Also on French, on the French Street, on the uphill side of French Street, there's some bushes there that are made for bad visibility, yeah, right there.
And that's for, but that's.
Cause it's uphill and then there's some bushes right there, that was made for.
That whole area is just air whacked right there and the roads turn and.
Well, French Street's a blind road, there is a sign up here that shows an intersection, but it doesn't say French Street. And I was thinking maybe if it said on that same sign like dangerous intersection or blind intersection with French Street or something, it would help, you know, let people know and that, cause we should do some more with signage for sure.
If you sell French Street to Mill Mills and it'd be down to French Street.
Well, now there's an idea, um, you can take that to the board of management, okay? But it, it, and it's, it's not for me to tell you what to do as far as signage goes, but, you know, it wouldn't hurt if you did, uh, request that proper signs we put up there.
Well, I did talk to Joe Luttrell about those little children's signs coming up out of Mills and then coming down, cause it's.
Trouble is, Chris, that, that road has nothing to do with Joe Luttrell.
Yeah.
That's called out of his ears. But he has to contact the state, right? Isn't he? He doesn't have a...
Anybody can?
I think the selectmen could give you a hand with that.
Yeah. Because there's more, you know, besides our smaller, there's a kid here, and then...
Well, there's a little boy that lives across the street from you.
Yeah, and then there's two more.
Well, I thought that little one was gonna actually run across the street when we were leaving, because he saw you and started saying hi and hello. And I thought he was gonna take off, because he was just there. And then finally, somebody came out of the house and saw him. And I'm like, oh, you know. Makes grandmothers nervous. That's what I can say to you. But anyway, that was my concern. The backyard, where the kids will be playing when it's outdoor time. When we went around the back of the house from the driveway.
Yeah, I think about that one.
Yeah.
There's...
Through the snow.
Through the snow, there's a fence stop area.
Yeah.
And there were a lot of things out there. Are those, that's...
That's all been moved out.
That stuff been moved and done?
Stuff from built in the garage and stuff.
Okay.
That hard times one...
We just started that, actually. We had started cleanup, Chris and I, of what we could get out there without kids and moving it all and...
And was there a trampoline?
Yep.
Are you...
I have rules and restrictions.
What's that?
So, my kids are allowed, but I don't really allow, I won't to daycare unless there was something signed or something. I mean, I have...
One of the most dangerous things for children. Highest, in fact, in some places, you're not getting health insurance if you're...
Yeah.
It goes up the... Just be careful.
My kids love it, and I'm like that. Chris and I are always out there, so I'm...
My grandson has one.
Great place to pick him up, very comfortable.
They really camp out there, too, and stuff? I mean, there's pros and cons with, but we're out there as parents.
And you asked where the septic tank was. It's, see that block right there?
Yep.
That's where it is. Just like when you asked, and I didn't, it's covered in smelling.
You have all your things from the state?
So, I have to have my permit first, that everything's ready to go for the state. So, through the town, to give it to them, to have all my ducks in a row when I called her. I have to have all that in.
Have you taken your course yet?
Everything's done, everything's good.
And you don't have a certificate from the course that you've completed?
I have that, too, yeah. I have, I've had everything for, what, about eight months now, CPR.
And fire marshal, that's been out?
They don't, so, when I get the permit from the town, put all that in a package, send it out, and then the fire marshal comes out. And then that's the last of it all, with as well as the state inspecting the house. So, I have to have it all in first. That's when I called her, she's like, so, that's what I'm waiting on.
You don't need that information before you grant the permit, like the fire marshal.
I would, that's what I'm, I'm kind of thinking, I'm hearing the horse before, the car before the horse, backwards.
You get a lot of chicken and egg things. A lot of times, like Mr. Boyce, he couldn't get financed until he gets a permit, but he needs a permit to get financed. So, you can put conditions on it that it's null and void unless you have fire marshal approval, or she can't open until she has this list of stuff you guys are looking for.
I mean, I have my checklist, and like, the last thing that's like on it would be the permit through the town, which, you know, I've been in check with the woman through the state. And she said, make sure you have this, 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 send it all in. It's all in a package, ready to send, and so...
Yeah, I think that's... And you just said somebody from the state.
Yeah.
And I think, I remember back from our conversation on the sidewalk, that the front porch was probably the biggest part of the old house that was left. Something like that.
No, this hall right here, this part, the main part of the house, and then from that door over is all left from it.
Okay. So, the porch that you walk into from the driveway? Oh, it was.
Somebody don't give ideas, because they trim it out, and they suck.
You know? I think you could start from under the bus.
No, we enjoy it.
Did you? Good, good. Because I'd like to see some handrails on it, that's my thing.
Just on that one rail, and then we're done.
Well, I'd like to see something where little kids, pregnant moms, when they're going up those stairs, and I know there are not many stairs, but they are open stairs, they're not closed, can hold on to.
What about that rail? That's not gonna...
There's a rail there already that's attached to the house.
Right. Now, how about on the other side?
Well, that's the closest to the wall. Why would I put a rail on a farm, an open farmer's porch? That's how, that's how...
So, the kids wouldn't fall down? Yeah. That sort of thing. Especially where you have open stairs. It's kind of like, if you're getting into a big thing, why do you have wider doors on some places? Because Americans with disabilities have such a factor. Not that it's what you want, but, again, it needs to be safe for the kids. You have open stairs, that one thing, think about it. That's all. So...
Probably come the house side, put a lower rail the kids can go on to. Like with the lower rail.
Is there a picture of it? No, no.
No, I remember what that looks like.
So, there's like a beam on that open farmer's porch? Can you put like a handle?
Well, you could put a rail below that, handrail underneath the, the one for the kids to hold on to that.
Just, again, it's, I'm thinking of safety.
Oh, the great, like, when you deal with children, I respect everything. You know what I mean? Like, all your things that you're shooting out there, like, definitely.
Yeah. Because, you know, I wish you well. I hope you make personal fulfillment out of this. And I think it's something you really love, and I hope it's successful.
Thank you.
Monetarily. But I don't want you to all of a sudden be looking at lawsuit or something like this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Something like that. So, what does everybody say on this?
Well, I think the application is pretty complete. I mean, we still, we have those couple of things we're noodling with. But I think it's complete enough to accept it, and it's a date for hearing.
Yeah.
Right. Except for the, if we can, except for the same being as lawsuit, I don't know. Whichever date that is.
I would, I would still like to see the safety thing, where the entrances really pursue. And I believe that Charlotte owns that right-of-way.
Which one? The one behind my house?
The one, that one right there?
No.
Okay. But whoever owns it? I, I said this last time, and I looked at that very carefully. And for the safety, I personally, I would like to see that at least investigated. And if they say absolutely not, then I guess it's absolutely not. But for a little bit of extra work, I guess, to have everybody come in, go safely, I think is...
What do you guys feel, so, like, when you're looking at that as because of the hill and how people come down? Is that like, I'm trying to see what you guys are seeing, like...
What I'm seeing is, when I stand there, I see the bigger trees, which you can see through just fine. But the smaller trees, the birches and stuff like that, when they leaf out, then you can't see.
Okay.
It blocks out. You can't, you can't see anything. It's fine in the wintertime, in the spring, in the fall. But in the summertime, you just can't see up the hill.
Do, I mean, if you guys do have a plan of, or things like this happening, is it like way, like, people talk to their neighbors about, like, hey, this is a concern? And then maybe we can, like, something different as well?
Well, you just trim it out for me to look.
We'll do that, I guess. We're asking your neighbor, I guess, but...
That is purely civil between you and your neighbors.
But you see people do that, like, what could that be?
It has nothing to do with us.
Oh, no, I know what you're gonna say, but I've seen people doing that, like, just to kind of, just block the birds or like that.
Because it has nothing to do with us, I can't tell you that I have ever seen anybody doing something like that.
We'll see quite a bit with the gravel pit entrances on the state highway that they'll trim and cut hundreds of feet both ways for a clean line of sight.
And what about with the state? Is that like supposed to be mandatory? Like, that they're supposed to be cut a certain way? Like, if you have them out front of your house?
No, I don't. What's the maximum number of children?
You said five, right?
So, with my four now, like, I would say the maximum, we would have...
The maximum, you'd be...
That I can have.
Yeah.
You said to us earlier, four would be...
Yeah, four more would be...
Four more kids. So, she'd have her kids plus four. So...
So, if one parent was coming with four kids, we'd be talking one parent.
Right.
Four parents came with one kid, you're talking four guys.
Right. Because we don't, not everybody's coming at the same time, I assume.
School gets out at one time, or...
But school does, but, you know. Yeah. Probably also have the early person, and you probably also have the late person.
Yeah, and I also make my schedule around my newborns now. Like, that will change in the future. But like, I'll have my before kids, sometimes I'll, you know, we'll do it that way. And then they'll go home early before the after-school kids even come. It's kind of set your own schedule type thing, what fits in your own life right now. So, that's what's fitting for my own life, with being and everything.
And if I could come home early, I could park right on that right-of-way anyways. So, that's still a problem.
You have four kids in the morning?
Um, right now, I have my children.
No, no, I don't, don't tell, I'm not worried about yours. You have four kids in the morning?
Not now, no.
Well, not now. When you're open and everything is beautiful.
Yeah, that's okay.
You have four kids in the morning that come and go.
Right.
Correct?
No.
Yes. I understand what you're saying.
Same. And then you have...
You have four customers.
Four coming in the afternoon.
It could be the same families, or it could be different families.
Oh, like the before and after pair, I guess, yes.
Right. So, do you, now, how about all day? How about, do you have any all day? None all day?
No, not on my schedule right now. And I won't be like that for a couple of years, because this works perfect. So, I can have my kids' events.
Is before and after over above the all-day? Can you have four all-day before and after?
I can have four, oh, wait, four all-day, and then four after-school as well to add on it?
If you, no, I don't think so. If you have kids, you have four kids from seven in the morning till four in the afternoon.
I can have that.
You can have that?
Yes.
But you can't have four more kids from seven in the morning until they go to school? Or how?
I can add on another four.
You can add on another four?
No. So, when those say I've had four kids in the morning, they left at noon for like a midday thing. They go home, they have their thing. And then all of a sudden, four more get off the bus. I can have that, those four went home. And that's kind of like how I do my schedule now, to keep me busy.
Right. No, that, I understand, I just wanted to make that clear.
Any given time, it's four.
Any given time.
Any given time, with me just being by myself.
No, if she didn't have children, I'll just throw a wrench at you. If she didn't have children of her own, she could have five.
I'd be glad if you told me four.
With two, with two providers, it's eight children, and...
No, no, let's not compute.
But I'm just saying, like, that's what I shop for with Brenda, because we would look at big.
With one, with one provider, five kids, correct?
Four kids.
Four kids, yeah.
With one provider.
Then how are they counting? How are they counting your child?
So, my three, they all count. But my little baby boy, River, counts right now.
So, you can only have three kids besides him?
Yeah.
Okay, so, right now? I've heard four before.
And so, um...
What's the application?
No, 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 yeah, but, yeah, that's the legal force. But I'm saying why one is counted. So, River is counted, so then I'll have three on the outside.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Oh, I understand.
But my three children...
Just the ages.
So, River and two more years, he won't count.
Okay, but we're not, we're not in two more years yet.
I know, I was saying.
Chris, is there a reason? I sense a little resistance to try to work out with somebody on that right-of-way? Is there a reason why you don't want to do that?
No, I said I would talk to the neighbor.
No, I mean, I, you just, you know...
No, I just thought it'd be easier, because my truck's not gonna be there, nor was like the other car that was in the driveway. If, when we designed the driveway, we thought, you know, for like mom, my mother, she's old. She'll get pulled in, and then back up, and then pull out.
Which she usually does. Well, when she, you know, before we had...
Where are your trucks at?
Where are my car at?
Your truck, yeah.
Well, it'd be at work, and if I come home early, I could actually park it right down on that right-of-way anyways, so, I could, or I could park it on French Street.
And we have a two-car garage.
So, you already have the access to the right-of-way?
No, I can ask Steve about that.
Okay.
That way, I'm, because...
They're close.
Yeah. My neighbor likes me, at least someone does.
Good neighbor, I'm assuming.
They actually park on that right-of-way sometimes, like, up further.
One of the, it's not parked there, so I can park here. I can park, and be out of the way for any car that comes right away.
I bet he did.
What?
I bet he did.
Their schedule, they're all on at that time. They all come home, and you come home.
Right, and then summer, right, if you sell, you want them to five-thirty, six o'clock.
I mean, the last time you guys were here, I voiced my concerns about that. And we talked about it. I haven't seen anything that would make me feel more comfortable with wanting to help here just in driveway, that's all.
And I've talked to the neighbor, trying to remember where Bush is there.
That may be.
It's a good idea, anyway.
Well, yeah, I have a neighbor to talk to, because I've been going fighting with that specifically of Bush and that Bird Street, it should be linked up anyways, so, it's a shame.
So, close to the bird, too. It's weird. It's pretty, though. It's pretty.
So, six-thirty to five-thirty, how's the operation?
Yes.
Four kids max, four paying customers?
Yes, yeah.
Reviewing the new driveway location, Dennis is talking about trimming the trees. The only other note I had was just a letter from a septic person saying your septic's adequate for the new proposed business.
You don't have a problem getting that? So, as far as the application goes, guys, what are we thinking?
You haven't made a motion, did you?
No, I just, I can make a motion, I'm sorry. I didn't formally.
He didn't formally make a motion, so that's all. So...
I'll formally make a motion. But we, so we're just accepting the application.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Do you want to technically set up a public hearing?
Yes. Do you think we can make it before August?
June, June 6, right?
June, June 6.
Yeah, I think we should maybe do that for the previous one, too.
Yeah, I think we should maybe do that for the previous one too, just get them all.
I think, I think that would be the easiest things to go.
I'd be happy.
So don't even try for the sixteen?
We told them we would.
Yeah.
Make a phone call. Make a phone call, you know, but don't. I mean, I, I don't want to give somebody, say we're going to do something and then not do it. So make a phone call on that, but I think realistically, we're looking at June sixth. Um, so that'll work, you guys. And, and the thing, I think we, we will want to do is put, um, conditions on that. Uh, we're going to want to see, you'll get this, but we're going to want to see everything back from the state as well.
So do that first then, tell them to get everything back from the state as well, or me after, if I'm not wrong?
You just told me you couldn't get anything from the state until you got.
Yeah, I know, like I was supposed to go back and say this is what the town said, so I don't know.
We'll just put it in as a condition.
We're putting it in as a condition, but before we sign the final thing, we want to see everything checked off.
I got you.
From your list, that, that it's all, you know, the fire marshal's been there, the, the whole, everything is from your checklist. I mean, you seem to be extremely organized, so I know you have everything. So do that and we'll also be getting in touch with the neighbors, don't we? Know if I need others. Know if we'll find any others and, um, you know, there's quite a few right there. And that's cost involved. They paid their fees, you paid your fees?
Yes. There's no more.
That's not too bad.
No?
No, because they're on the state border and I guess we're not going to notify them.
Oh, I guess Chris was right. Sell the street to.
French Street.
French Street and Collin Goods. Collin Good.
They still get power off Indiana, so might as well give it to them anyways.
Okay.
So you'll check with your neighbor on the driveway access post?
Right away?
Proposably, yeah.
Wasn't it said that came up as Charlotte?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask hers. Because we were just talking all back the other day and then it was right away in the back. She had the trailer.
Oh, something up there?
Yeah, like right, see that big rock?
Yeah.
Right, there's a right way, it comes down, but I don't know where it goes to all back. And we were just talking all back the other day, actually reading the right way. So I can, I'll ask her about that because I gotta talk to her anyways.
I think it sounded like Dennis, you're thinking they come in, there's a parking lot here, a stairwell or something like that.
Exactly.
I know it kind of slopes down in that area.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good slope actually, isn't it? Well, the front of your house has put slopes in the road.
Well, you know, Dennis is talking about that, but I'm just saying, you know, the steps and so. So like if you count that as a saint, like.
Oh, yeah.
With that, so if you have stepping stones still, let me just leave it out, so we'll see a long way for the kids to follow up.
That, that's something you guys could, could work out, but, yeah, thank you. Yeah, working it out, yeah.
One of my biggest missions in life has always been safety of children and I just. And, and I'm not saying it is, I just, you know, I just want to do what is meant to be right for everybody, you know, safer.
Where does the school bus stop there?
Right in front of my driveway. Right in front, but I, I every morning am out with my kids. Because I don't. I'm not over mom, like I go out to the bus stop and I'm like, okay, go ahead guys. Because you never know if someone's going to blow a stop sign on the bus. I've seen that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we all do.
Seen all those things, so I always.
I've had toys recently down the hall.
Lady out.
Nobody, I ran around with toys in the last month.
Some people are just, you know, distracted.
And have them up here and be true.
So if you guys, um, you know, keep doing what you're doing and like I said, the concerns were about handrail.
Okay.
Particularly the, the drop off and pickup. Um, anything you can work out to make it a hundred percent safe? We're happy with that. And then we'll give Brenda a call in a couple of days and next week and on the public hearing. And come back with that.
And that's going to be June sixth?
The sixth, the sixth. The sixth, that's, that's easy, you can do that. It's going to be easy, it's going to be the sixth. So you can count on that date.
Awesome.
And go from there.
Okay. Thank you everyone.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice night.
You too.
Hi there.
Who's that?
That, that's the people in front of me.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, boy.
Hi.
How are you?
Look at her, you know.
Look at her, hell.
Guys enjoy some of these windy days.
Yeah.
And it's been a blast.
Trying some hopefully.
So after the wind, I assume the buildings are still standing?
Not my neighbors.
Really?
Barn and.
Oh, my goodness. So this was a modification, right?
The existing condition we used was for under a tent.
Under, yeah.
Uh, and catered, I would imagine still being catered, just trying to move into the existing barn.
Okay.
Is that a seasonal? That was a question.
Well, currently the barn's non-heated, so.
And with the season.
It's going to limit your season there, yeah.
What would we have to do for heat in that barn?
Uh, insulate it.
Just do that, yeah. But it's possible.
Yeah. They do have the construction permit from the fire marshal's office.
What was the number, how many people?
Uh, fire marshal look at three hundred.
Uh, that was in the tent.
That could be the old one, yeah.
Yeah, because I would imagine that barn is at the most forty.
How big's the barn?
Thirty-six by thirty-seven.
Because if you use that corner for the catering.
You have to subtracting.
You've got to subtract.
Catering, I'm not sure, well, well, yeah, it's kind of that area is for, yeah, you're going to take out twelve by fourteen.
Twelve by fourteen?
Twelve by twelve. Yeah, but that still might be saving from that.
Because that's where the electricity is, right?
Yeah, we added some extra plugs into that half wall.
Yeah, I, I noticed that and that not, that was perfect for catering, because you've got your table height. You've got your warmers there and the plug's right there.
No, I got, I got another nice slab that I'm going to put in the open part too, so it'll be two covers. But I didn't think of that limiting the number of people we have.
Well, that's, you said that's twelve by.
It is twelve by twelve.
Twelve by twelve, so that, you've got to take that out. And, um.
Twelve by thirty-seven five.
Standing.
Uh, that's fifteen square feet per person. Let me see, they have table chairs. You'd never be able to do with the configuration, so.
You just got to think of dance floor sound and if you do.
Yeah, once you start subtracting that stuff.
No, I mean, tables, dancers, DJs, whatever, yeah.
I think the fire marshal could set twenty-five, stand in like eighty, like four or five.
In that barn?
Yeah. With tables and chairs. Yeah.
I, I honestly, I honestly can't see it. It's just, uh.
The other thing that kind of restricts the amount too is, is the petitions.
Right, the way they're boxed up.
You know what I mean? Because you'd have to have a certain space.
Right.
Where if you didn't have those petitions there?
Right.
And I don't know if the people, the structure, I don't remember if it's the type of structure you could do away with those petitions. Uh, they have to be there for support, like, I.
Yeah.
The uprise.
Yeah, because, and in each one of those areas, if you're putting in a six or eight foot table, you're going to get two, at the most, cramped together. Two six-foot grounds in there and.
What if we did away with the service area and did the whole barn for seeing over the number of them?
Well, if Dennis want to, probably, I would think, you wouldn't, you would either be doing the tent in the barn or potentially for a smaller event, just the barn. So you wouldn't want to exclude yourself from being to use just the barn and, and those couple of other buildings next to where you were talking about.
Right.
Don't forget about them, but, because for a smaller event, just like a dinner or something, it wasn't wedding, just some other event.
You would want to keep your serving area, I think that'd be very vital.
Because you would have, there are three sections on each side of the barn.
Correct.
So two, four, six, eight, ten. Ten six-foot tables, you're going to get six people at each table. Still, and that depends on the table, I mean, you, you have tables that will sit twelve. Oh, I know, I know, I mean, you know, I used to do the equipment. We're both, we both used to do, or still does, um, I had a restaurant, I did catering. And people hate six-foot tables, by the way, go use them if you can get away with it.
They do have them.
Rounds, yeah, because it's like this. And, um, these tables aren't friendly because do you sit aside of your wife or you sit across from her? But that's neither here nor there. Um, it's, it's, um.
My wife usually wants me sitting the other room.
In the other room.
She don't, you're at home still.
Yeah, but, um.
So for notes, I had one was floor plan, floor plan for the barn.
Right. The floor and the floor itself. And we had talked about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Would, would you come up with, you thought maybe a solution to that, you don't have it yet?
Go over the top of it or something or?
Just put down another floor.
Yeah, yeah. I think it'd be easiest way to do it, it's going to three hundred to rip up after you try and one corner right over by this.
Is, is that what you're going to try to do with that?
The corner with a, yeah.
Yeah, so you, the left, the front left corner?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. And how about, um, shoring up the right front?
That, yeah, we were just talking about that up there. I'm used to places that start fresh with the one.
And a deck?
We, that's kind of why we're here, we want to get the building permits, we can put the deck on, but.
Do you have a plan?
Uh, do we have a plan?
Do you have a plan?
A floor plan or I need a picture, I might get a little picture of it.
Do you have to do?
So I think you're thinking, originally you were thinking the deck was just on the backside here. And I, I missed the sidewalk, I heard some people comment about bringing it around the side.
Like this, this picture here doesn't include what we had talked about on the sidewalk.
Right.
It doesn't show the door there either.
Yeah, we had talked about wrapping it.
I did myself.
Okay, the toast, yeah.
Better.
Just hold it up this way, we can see. Um, because that gives him, if he wraps it around.
Yeah, you were talking about having it kind of tie right into the ground there.
Well, you could do almost the same thing, but that gives you your egress, that can be.
Correct, yeah.
You know, um.
Yeah, it works as far as you bring in fill-in to this area versus bringing the deck around, either way.
Right. Because on the other side of the, of the barn, it's at a ground level, which is pretty much at ground level.
On the arms side, yes, I have one step there.
Right, right, but that's not. So.
I guess the thought, then look at that. You have that deck go across the backside, then when you come around this side with a ground, go down like this. For a second, I don't know, like the fire escape. Uh, you don't want people to go back in the building and, and my thought was, you also want that handicap accessible. Uh, so if somebody's out there on the deck, they're doing whatever, in a wheelchair, whatever, that they're going to come off that.
Instead of going down.
Instead, you know?
You got some.
That, and I, looking at it, I thought that was probably the most cost-effective way of doing it.
Right.
Especially when you got another, you got, you have your exit doors are on both sides of the barn. And that ramp would tie into that, exit on that side of the barn. Because you can't use, like, like you said, you can't use your big doors for your exits, you know?
Did you want to include those other two buildings we were looking at?
Now, two of us think that you have to take control of this. And really take over those two little buildings. They're going to.
They're both, yeah.
Yeah, cost-effective and add a lot for you.
Yeah, right.
It's like the old outhouse and the shed.
Right, yeah.
Um, they're under the trees sort of, Steve.
They're a little problem.
The trees. A little outhouse gets fixed up for a little opportunity and then shed is the dressing room for the bride.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
But I think that's basically paint. Oh, no, you said getting your husband to clean out stuff. Get rid of stuff.
Well, he didn't buy, so I think he'll do that shed.
So maybe just updating the plan and you can grab this right off the town website. This is the tent area, then that would be the barn and then whatever you want to label the outhouse and the shed. Uh, where you bought it, parties would be the parking area.
What if someone wants to put the tent in a different area?
Um, it's your land, it's your facility.
Like just a smaller tent closer to the, uh, barn or something? On the catering, like ready to find it if they want it.
I can see a caterer might want to put a, a second, um, tent closer to it. But again.
Yeah.
No, you could do that on the plan, perspective area for.
Right.
Right.
Exhilarating tent. But you have it just been a parking area.
Yeah.
I have to look for it. Especially if the tent is over near or over near. That would really go.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
Then you wouldn't be here.
No.
Never come.
That's true.
Exactly.
Exactly, exactly, but, um.
We also were talking about having a designated smoking area. And instead of having people just kind of smoking wherever, maybe you had like an area, you say, please smoke over here.
Yeah, I'd rather do that anyway.
And put that on the plan for us, so that again, you can decide where it is as long as it makes sense, you know? Um, just so they're not nilly-willy about, because that was one of my concerns with the old barns.
Yeah, I mean, and you could actually put some sort of spittoons or something. So it would be obvious, you know, this is where, you know, dispose of your smoking material properly.
And a sign, you know, sign on the barn, this is no smoking, that twenty-foot building or something like that, I'd like to see that. Just like they have, like Hannaford, you know, where any builds have.
Any public building, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's very helpful. But now on your picture, your deck doesn't have a railing? Or it does?
It does.
It does. I just didn't see it.
Yes, full holder.
Oh, yeah, there, there, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, no, fire marshal, but the other things that we're talking about the sidewalk was like concerned about like open flames and candles or something.
Yeah, we said like no open flames.
And then if, um, like if it's a cold, rainy day, you could do like, um, space heaters or make kind of that in the morning.
Right, just make sure there's no open flames, you're not using propane units or.
Right.
They call key, salamanders or whatever they call it.
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure, yeah.
You don't want any of that open. In fact, did you not say, or did we, I don't know if you said it or we said it, it should be in any contract.
Right.
That you had, and I know we did ask you to bring us copy of the contract. Um, it should be in that there will be no open flame.
Yeah, they do have that in the contract.
Good, yeah. And, um, about shaking dishes. Shaking dishes, use, uh.
Yeah, sterno.
Sternos, would really be considered an open flame.
Yeah, yeah.
But they also can use electric hot plates too. You know, rather than.
They're not as efficient as sterno. Food gets cold really fast.
Oh, I know. Even the water bath ones?
That's, that's what's sterno.
No, but you can get now electric with water bath that work very well.
We haven't upgraded, I guess.
Don't want them to mess.
I just, I just think in that if you really won't need it heat or anything, if you serve like two berry ice cream or something.
Apple pies? Yeah, apple pies.
That's right, you're going to a wedding, you're not gonna want a blueberry pie for a meal.
No.
I'm not.
Do you like, are you planning on doing, with your, with your catering, are you planning on doing plate of meals or just buffet?
Then you'll have to. You don't do any catering.
I get the, all the caterers.
What are you, uh, you.
I don't cater.
No, no, but you have caterers come in.
Right.
So what do they do? Do they, do, do you have, do they do buffets, or do you, would you plate at dinners also?
Well, they hire a per caterer, however, they, or maybe something like that.
Well, suppose you have the event, you, you hire to do Global Bankers United or something like that, and it's your event. You know, because they, they came to you and they want to have it with you, and they want you to do it. Are you gonna say yes?
I would like to.
I know, that's the right answer, of course. You would like to, so, and that's when Leslie's question comes in.
That's what you want, yeah.
Yeah.
I would be, I would, I prefer buffet, you know.
Just ask the client to.
Just ask the client.
Whatever they refer.
Yeah.
I'd say just listen to your mom.
Yeah, write that one down.
That's the condition.
That's gonna be condition number one, listen to your mom. Oh, that would be good. So. Now, since this is. This is really an existing thing already.
So we'd be amending the existing.
We'll be amending the existing, yeah. And how does, I will tell you, I've never seen, come across one of those, so what do we do?
No, we haven't. We have to, we still have to every year, right?
Yeah, well, I know that, but I mean. Just to look over it, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not much different than that right there, so we should probably have the existing condition used in front of this area.
Right, that, that, I will make sure you have all of them. Okay, we'll have that. And, um. We'll invite your neighbors who are within five hundred. Feet of you.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, so that might be a couple of deer and something else, maybe two or three people.
This is.
Nobody showed up before either.
We really wanted to stay up, and we said, hey, we can't be contacted, we really like other areas.
We just actually had it, so we just.
Right, right. That's right, Brenda, we go to eleven and two then, right?
I, usually I just send a notice, because it's a state of town hall, it's the same state. I only have their, their bottom list, so usually I just send it to the town halls, what I did before.
Hmm, no, yes?
We did something to notify people, but I can't remember what.
Yeah.
Yeah, the people that showed up are, would have been on that, so.
They did.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Okay, well, I think we have another public hearing coming up. And we can do.
Sounds like June sixth.
Because, we can do three on June sixth? You only have two so far. But if we put theirs on, it'll be six. It'd be three, no, well, I, you're. Yeah, I think we can. But I'm, I'm saying three if we can't get voiding. And we should be able to do it, I think.
You do most of your work on one day.
It'll be two, three sessions more a day.
Yeah, it's hard to know how many people show up and how much conversation there is, you know, it's a little hard to proceed.
Yeah.
I think with us, I think most people assume from the beginning that we're gonna use the barn.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think they'll probably come. They got ones before anyways, so.
Okay.
I don't think they'll come listening.
Except the people from Lebanon.
I don't think so, sure.
Yeah, no, okay.
But we still have to notify, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, then, um, we'll, we will have your original paperwork in front of us. And we'll probably have a couple of additional notes we'll want to put on, have use. Uh, you know, the, on the top of my head is the, the, it's a no open flame, we want to make sure that is your second. Door, but I guess how to keep though you have to have there is, you know, is integrated somehow. Any other things are all done. And so we will see you on June sixth, June sixth.
You should check, yeah.
Make sure you check. Should I make a motion or should we?
Yes.
Or do we already accept it?
Do we accept?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we can accept. We can accept.
We accept the condition of use modification application. Say.
Anyone discussion? All in favor? Very good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Good night.
You too.
Guys, wanna take a short recess? Before we. No, getting late.
Come on, you quick, you quick. Just remember, we got a second page, you know, there in the paper.
You need a chat, a second page, come on now. Yeah, let's meet the mates.
But there is stuff.
Oh, I know.
There is stuff. I'm here. Thank you.
So Joe was in earlier this week, he looked at the plans and he made some revisions, that's why we didn't do ones right now.
So, I'm there.
This way?
I wasn't sure if I'd saw off the alarm or not up there, so.
Oh.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
So, since the, you know, the last time we had our, our second sidewalk, in the last, since the last plan you've seen. You know, in the area that, that isn't reclaimed here, we now show our proposed grading, grading in red. We have heard, per discussion with Ken we've had, you know, and now depict the berm that's out towards one oh nine. Have noted on the plan that, uh, that berm needs to be left alone as, you know, a bit of a barrier. And nobody can disturb that, uh, that, that material pile and vegetation that's already growing on it unless they come back and, you know, speak to the board about that. Um, I have added a few spot grades and areas where they're still working, they're proposed, and areas where they're not working, they're existing. Uh, which help depict that the water is intended to go in the, in the center of the, the, basically in the center of the area where they're still working. And, you know, that kind of shows some, a few flow direction arrows where, where it all goes relative to the contour. And that everything is supposed to be graded, so everything ends up in the middle, uh, as far as any runoff on the open area. For some late discussion at the last sidewalk, Billy and Gavin sort of worked out that, uh, they, they both think it's a good idea to have some trees planted along the, the edge of eleventh street. Both for aesthetics and for, for screening, uh, and help with, you know, different soil stability along the years of the road and whatnot. And then they both also agreed to, to have a line of new trees planted just on the southwest of the side of the garage. Uh, both of them, you know, kind of agreed that that would be a good idea as well, and may help alleviate any concerns if, um, if Billy takes that hill out. Uh, the little hill that's beside the garage there, like, like his client wanted there, so I'm kind of hoping that's a good happy medium for everybody. Beyond that, I showed them, showed them two monitoring wells. I think that's most of the modifications, it just gave the appearance of a few things to, to make it more obvious what the, the intention was here at the end.
I, I know looking at this, uh, right here. Is exactly how I envisioned in the very beginning. All this will be accomplished. I'm not gonna disagree with Gavin on all the, the trees that he wants, but, uh, I was more interested with the ones down by the garage. But if everybody's happy with this, uh, I went down there again, looked at what Billy had been doing, it was good, the slopes look good. And I think he's doing a good job. That's what I get to say about it. If anybody else has anything to say, I'll get some more to say.
No, I, um.
So the berm, is that what you're drawing?
Yeah.
The berm between the garage and the house, uh, between the garage and the lawn, talk a little bit more about that.
Um, their, the, their hope is to, to continue the elevation from now around eighty, eighty-nine feet. And, you know, still, this, this one, that one hill, the, the intention is to still hopefully take it out with the trees. Um, the trees are in the state, the normal de-vegetation and stabilization that would, that needs to happen anyways for reclamation. You know, act as a good barrier and, you know, it'd be a, I guess, a real concern since you may have had, but that's. Uh, Mr. Sattell is still very much hoping to have a, you know, relatively flat run from this garage back to the field that would be back here.
You, you discussed that with him.
Yeah, yeah.
Since our last sidewalk.
Yes.
So, we're gonna leave it, but he wants it a little flat, I, I lost you somewhat there, Joe.
Uh, no, uh, their, their hope is to still take down that.
To take it down.
That knob, um, and then restabilize it and then plant the trees, uh, along the edge of the garage, kind of in that.
Sort of between where it was and where the garage is.
Yes, yeah.
And that would, right, for stabilization and that sort of thing.
Correct.
Then it would go from the eighty-six contour to the eighty-eight and then drop back down.
Yeah, so basically, you know, it, it's partially there already, so, you know, if you're looking at the red light here, kind of anything, you know, from here back would all funnel towards the center here, water-wise. And then, you know, there kind of naturally is, and he, you know, the plan is to, to make it even more functional. There is like a two-foot berm right here, and then we're envisioning just a, basically a ditch on one side of it to keep any water up from here. From being able to spill out into the road and going this way, and then also, you know, kind of fixing up the little bit of a ditch that's here, be, you know, kind of beyond this point, heading this way to at least, um. Try to, try to get any water that isn't the road going on the end of the road, and we're off the travelway.
Did, did you talk to him about that issue with the water and how Billy planned, uh, wanted to divert it into the block there so it wasn't washing out the road? Did you ask him about road water entering his lawn area and how he felt, or?
Yeah, that's, you know, basically, there's kind of, there's kind of a cutoff point here in this particular part of the design. So anything up in, in this area of the road, you know, we're gonna try to kind of turn the corner and send this way. And then, you know, anything from, from, from down here, it's gonna be kind of taken care of with the ditch, you know. Secondarily, this little bit of a berm that's right here traps anything that may come down off this hill, you know, from being able to spill out into the road. Let's see, you can see I have a kind of a little ninety-foot contour there between two eighty-eights, so that's the whole point, is to have kind of a little bit of a. So again, anything up in, up in this area, catch, the plan is to catch it on the site. And then kind of at some point here, when we transition away from the area where they're working, uh, we sort of have this little bit of a berm and a ditch on both sides of it. To kind of keep anything onsite, onsite, and then help the, the little bit, anything in the road in this area, we help it be geared towards a little bit of a ditch in this.
Sort of.
At least get it out of the travelway, um, to where it is now, yeah.
And you kind of stopped your, um, line of trees there, to keep that ditch vegetated, you want to keep that open, is that what you?
Uh, I'm open to either, I think, um, honestly, I think I just picked, you know, onsite, we, we were tossing around the idea of twenty-five trees. I think they have even that, I think they have nineteen here now, and I think, I think maybe we were thinking they came in a pack of twenty-five, and, you know, the.
Right, abundant.
Right, so, I mean, if we want to put the rest of it there, or, you know, that's, that's fine, if, if you want that to continue, I, I.
And what was the spacing you came up with for the trees?
Um, I guess.
We usually ask by twenty, twenty by twenty spacing.
Okay, I guess I.
So we'd have to do the math to see how many we'd end up with.
Yeah, and I, um, I didn't bring this.
Well, it's about four hundred feet along the road, right?
Right, so, yeah, I'm depicting, I'm depicting fifteen, yeah, if it's twenty, two, two of that spacing, that's, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, yeah. And just a single row was your proposal?
Yeah.
And in the back, we've got the twenty-five foot buffer strip vegetation not to be removed, is that existing trees, or is that, you're gonna just leave that twenty-five feet to regrow as it will?
If, both, they're, um.
Oh, it fluctuates.
So, so basically, you know, the ordinance, I can't remember the exact wording, suggested it was a good idea to, to depict some buffers. And, uh, basically, I showed the tree line, what's already open now, and this, this is, um, pretty accurate. The, the tax gap, this line's off a little bit, it shifted it, it was just a tiny bend. So, there are already, basically, there already is a twenty-foot wide vegetated buffer strip. The point of calling it out on the plan was to make sure it didn't get disturbed.
It's gonna be maintained, right?
It's gonna be.
Yeah.
The other thing, Joe, that, I mean, the gentleman wants to be able to access this from between the garage and the road. He wants to be able to access this part of the property, to my understanding.
I thought it was from the back of the garage or around.
Was it?
Yeah.
Time where Billy had already dug it out.
Yeah, what I, what I was picturing at, um, Dennis, was that he had, he was, um, he was hoping just that we could pull the tractor around the back of the building. Kind of both, between the bottom of this slope, you know, this, between the red line and the garage, just so he could sink between these trees or whatever and get out here and do any maintenance work that he needed to do.
Right.
But going around the front, I think he's gonna have trouble with the berm and the ditches that are there, so I think he probably need to go around the back.
I mean, I just. The whole purpose of what he's doing is for access to this.
Yeah.
And I just don't want the tree so whatever that he can't get through there, that's all.
So you take one tree from there, you put it on.
Will it help the front?
On the front, and you open the area for it, and it's still there.
I, I, I think they'll be able to make it work, I mean, like he said, we're looking at ten, twenty-foot spacing between these trees too. It's gonna be a lot of years before he wouldn't be on the drive, but between them anyways, you know. You know, with a five-foot wide tractor, whatever. I think, I appreciate your concern there, Dennis, but I think, I think he'll be able to manage this.
Respond to me, respond to that, yes.
I, I particularly, with the trees this way, along the road, to me, it, it's gonna be a much better, I mean, the trees, any water that's running off that gets to the trees. The trees are gonna be like sponges, gonna keep it off the road. It's gonna look nice, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna have a much better, and as long as these other berms stay undisturbed, in the front and along the property line on the other side. I, I think you've come up with a very nice compromise.
Well, I think what Joe's done, yeah, I mean, is exactly what.
Yeah.
Anybody would want, I mean, you got no water going out on the road, you got no water going down into the lake.
Right.
And the homeowner is getting what he wants.
Zapping.
I think it's a win-win for everybody, it's laid out.
I don't have any additional notes, except for I just put twenty-five in the legend by the trees for quantity count.
Well, we didn't come up with that. That wasn't really a point. I just said those twenty-five in a bundle. I think we should go with the spacing, the twenty by twenty spacing. So we just kind of, we didn't...
Listen Gavin, we're fine, but if you want to put that as a condition, then we have to have one, you know, twenty feet.
Yeah, and a few bullets, yeah.
But, um... And I, and I think by the bottom, we probably would put it even closer than that.
I would suggest that maybe double it over there, and then you would have to, you know... I would suggest more trees than that, but this, this is looking like what we're talking about. Maybe just have some, I don't know, are we gonna be changing this plan at all or is it pretty? If we have any other changes, we could put some more vegetation notes on here, but if there's no other changes, maybe we won't do it, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you, I think you can read them in as a condition of permit too, if that's something left. We still have to...
True. Well, the benefits of having Joe here is he's the one that's gonna run back, click, print and change it versus other applicants have to go to somebody to have to...
Right, right.
At least you're talking to the guy that...
You know, if that's the only thing, you know, I'm happy to, you know, if you wanna even approve it on the condition that I drop off a plan showing them every twenty feet and, you know, if you want a couple more up there by the garage up and the communication, then that would be fine.
Yeah, I was thinking, under the notes, I was thinking we could just have a note, number nine or something, said vegetation, and then just do the twenty by twenty spacing on.
And I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as, if, you know, if that ends up being the only thing hanging us up, I'd hate to, for it to go on for another two weeks with, just, uh... Just for that.
Right, right.
If we could help.
Maybe Gavin was saying, there's, you get a lot of twenty-five trees. As a bundle. And I would think if you, if you, if that's what you're going by, that if you're putting twenty-five trees there, uh, you do what you can do. If they gotta be twenty-two feet apart and accomplish the same thing, I think it's foolish to exceed that. I mean, the all of, the land is all sloping back towards the mountains. So that one row of trees is really, I mean, is really sufficient. And if you have extra trees, you want to put a few more there, all right, but I would welcome. I think it's kind of unfair that they've kind of bent over backwards to accomplish what we wanted to accomplish and, um... I don't know. That's just my only answer.
That's what we talked about today.
I don't think it'd be twenty-eight trees or thirty trees or...
I'd like to see the twenty by twenty spacing and something about, um... That they're still there after five years or something. Some, we like to have some sort of guarantee that the thing survives for X amount of time. It's not just, you plant it and then it dies from the drought. You know, we like to have some sort of timeframe.
My showing violation is the state requires eighty-five years.
Yeah, something like that, sounds great. So by twenty by twenty, Gavin, that's usually grid, will it can happen?
Well, I was thinking multiple rows myself, given me, but, um, if it's a single line, they'd be twenty feet apart.
Twenty-foot spacing.
And then maybe I'd ask for, it says coniferous trees, maybe I'd ask for, you know, red and white pines instead of just conifers, so you don't end up with the non-native spruces that looks a little more like the native trees.
Yep, as long as you know more about that than me, as long as we can easily order them in those bundles I'm talking about, um, let's, let's do it.
You won't get mixed bundles. Make two bundles, now you got fifty.
Now you have fifty trees and maybe one might wouldn't do it for them, who knows?
Well, I don't know if I trust those ones to last the eighty percent.
Right.
I would have to buy them twice, so they don't...
Home Depot, if they don't last a year, you can bring it back. Or they renew it. Or Amazon could throw them in.
I think we did, I think we did just think that Arbor Day was a good source for you. Remember I mentioned, yeah, I asked candidates for Arbor Day too.
Yep.
Absolutely.
But no, we're, wherever that number comes to, well, we are fine with the twenty-five trees.
As long as they're good-looking enough and big enough, so in three years, we can only get our Christmas trees, so we'll be in.
Right.
Right.
We just went through all this to get them on here. Don't be talking about cutting down.
Well, you're smiling this week, it's wonderful.
We just have to bring our ornaments down there.
There you go, there you go. I like natural ones anyway. Yeah, that would be good. So, um... We need to have...
Thirty-three point six.
Thirty-three point six trees.
Really?
Make it twenty-two and a half feet.
Okay. Twenty-four, three.
Twenty-eight, three, yeah. Um, public hearing. What are you doing? Yeah.
Trying the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, the next meeting.
We're gonna try for the next meeting.
June sixth, right.
If you can get Boise's...
If you can get Boise, please try and get this one.
I wish they had three the same night on the envelope.
Yeah. You better have three then, because you're probably hearing three at the same time. Yeah, but that's okay.
You think Sattell's gonna be able to make it?
If we can, if we can...
I'll certainly ask him.
Because if they make it on June sixth, he could be able to make it to the hearing, but you could help with the butters and everything.
Let's see, he's, he's, he's an older gentleman. I don't, I think he'll still want myself and Billy to do most of the talking. I don't think it's a great...
That's, that's fine.
Well, that's fine, yeah.
But before we, we get to who's gonna be here right now.
I think we should do June sixth for all four of them, just do it up.
But it's gonna be a little more than that, actually.
Is it above this stuff on the agenda?
Mm-hmm, yep, we do.
We have to push two of them further in the month of June, then.
Well...
Or it's scheduled Saturday, Thursday, right? We don't have the meeting.
Let's see if we can get it for next meeting. I just won't go home tonight. You can stay at my house. It's only eighty-five miles down the road.
I don't think there's any rush on this one, because they're already doing the whole project anyway.
Well, we'd like, we would like to get it out and put it in.
Get it behind you.
But you guys are, are doing the project. The hearing doesn't slow down. I think June sixth would be fine.
I'm pretty sure, we have something, yeah, good, that'll be good.
If Billy comes out and helps you, he'll figure it out.
That's funny. If he remembers. If he remembers.
She's the one actually getting it, ooh. You gotta run, help her, you know. You watch.
That was funny.
He didn't, yeah, he didn't joke back. I told him to be on the best behavior. He was, he was just, he was trying hard.
That's a paper. I'd like to change that in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's a paper. The people read it.
It says newspaper.
But that has a little odd. It has things from different towns. It has, you know, public bids going on.
That's the best way to get the word out.
However, I can't get that in ten days before the, so I have to get it in the Sunday Portland Press Herald to cover the ordinance, but I can get it in the smart shopper for the week before the, any ten days, so we're kind of...
Yeah, you have to do both.
Yeah.
At this bad time, I'd like to look to see if statutory by law would require you to put it in a paper or it's just our zoning. If it's just our zoning, that's so old, the whole website.
So we can just post it.
Change the ordinance and change it, put it on my website and put it in the smart shopper.
We need to change the ordinance, yeah, we need to.
So I'll make, I'll, I'll do those calculations and then get that spacing.
Fine, okay.
And then just the note on the plan, and I'll take the plan.
The note saying that twenty-foot spacing that we're using down the side of the road and up the side of the bomb and the eighty percent two-wide years or whatnot.
Yeah.
So the liability, yeah.
Yeah, something, yeah.
We'll, we'll get that on there. So, um, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the application.
Any motion to accept the application? Say again.
Discussion? On favor? Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully you don't have too many other proceedings to review before you go.
And will you please give Brenda a call next week, number two, three or so? She'll tell you.
What I can do is all that we know.
Her magic, if her magic worked.
Her magic's pretty strong.
It is.
Probably, we do, we understand, that's the worst.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good night. Okay. Yep. Zoning ordinance discussion, which is new business, uh, that we've seen it over because of our people here waiting for us, so...
So...
I'm going to turn it over to Ken.
I think the books got changed earlier tonight.
They did.
Well, but then... So we can't change the website yet, so I've got the old up on the screen. And if we're on page sixteen, it was five hundred to nine 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 nine, a hundred to four seventy-five. So we've changed these two around, because we don't need the, um... Town meeting vote just to relocate those. We haven't changed anything else on that. So now it should be reading nine ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine. This one stays the same, and then we brought the five hundred to nine thousand nine hundred to the bottom. So we've changed that. The big issue is that we had, that we fixed last year, was really when we clicked print and sent it upstairs, this whole earth moving ten thousand yards thing stayed on. So if you look in your ordinance now, we did vote to have all this verbiage removed, and this mineral extraction stayed in. For your ordinance now, it's the second one down on page seventeen. That was the big one we wanted to have fixed. It's already fixed. We did that last year.
It just didn't get printed.
It just didn't get. When we, and we've had some other issues, when we go to click print and it goes over to the printer, it changes some of the stuff. The printer we have rarely fights us with, um...
Sometimes lines move?
Yes.
Or get drawn.
Uh, check marks, it hates, and there's a few other things.
It hates footers.
Uh, yeah, the footers, we lost the selectmen's signatures or, or, um, on the fee schedule, we lost notifying of butters and a few other things we, and notifying of the paper, so that all got dropped off the fee schedule and we had to go and change that again. So this is cleaned out. We don't need to go to town meeting for that. It was already done, so they're all fixed in your books. Hopefully we'll have the website fixed. Uh, so if we go back to the other ones we were kind of looking at, we've put them in the order that makes more sense in the book now. So we were going to talk to the selectmen or, or look at bringing this to town meeting. I think we want to have a little... The selectmen were okay if we were changing some numbers on the end of this, but we may want to look at what's permitted and what's conditional use. Because if we dropped this down to nine 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 nine, it's not permitted. So you can move a thousand yards and that's not permitted. We're probably thinking that's a conditional use or it's permitted with review from us. I think we're going to put a little bit of time and not rush changing these letters and take a look at this in August, September or so, and not worry about bringing anything to town meeting except for our timber harvest ordinance this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
The biggest problem I had was the mineral extraction thing. That's all set. We did that last year.
I think from things that we've seen...
Yep. I hate that.
If we can't, if we, we always work, come out better when we don't rush things.
And that's what I was saying.
And that's around, across the board.
I think the intent of getting, dropping this down makes sense, but then it's not, uh, you know, it's all permitted or not permitted, conditional use. We want to look at that a little bit more, I think, and, and maybe change these numbers greater than a thousand yards. And, and that's just cutting a knob down and moving stuff on site. I think I'd put a little bit more thought on that, so when we go to town meeting, it's well thought out. We've had a little bit more informational. I need to have a public hearing when we get good information from the public or they have a concern and we're like, um, sorry, there is no time to change it. This is what it is. This is moving forward.
Yeah, but we can't do it till next year.
Exactly. I like the informational meetings in January, February. We find out where our mistakes are, we change them, we fix it. And then we have our final April, May, and then we move forward with that. So I think we've reorganized these a little, so it flows a little better. Um, we're not gonna have any major projects under this. The big one was that mineral extraction that we've cleaned out. That is, that filling grading earth moving, that redundant ten thousand is out of there. So we now know mineral extraction, by definition, is more than a thousand yards, is a conditional use for everybody. You may not doing it in a show in its own little house fee or resource protection or the village.
So I'm gonna give my take on it, where it was dying to hear.
Staying up late for it.
I'm gonna say this. Ken, if you think we can work with this for another year, it's fine with me.
Yeah, and then we can have some, of course, we always think, when it gets a little slow, we'll take care of it, but I don't know if it's gonna get slow.
It's not gonna get slow.
I mean, we got a presidential election next year that usually changes the things, but, um... We have a different economy here where we've got the seasonal homes and the people from away that are doing that. That's usually not affected from that. Those are usually larger scale projects, but maybe we won't see a dog park next year, but, uh, I think we're gonna continuously see, hopefully, more than just gravel pits. We have a ton of the gravel pit permits.
Maybe even more wedding barns?
I hope we capped out on that too.
Oh my gosh.
So...
Something needs to be in the Motel Six.
May sixteenth, we have a public hearing. We're gonna talk about the...
Gavin's moved on.
Yep.
No, it's the same thing.
Okay.
But we're talking about a public hearing for the zoning ordinance changes, right?
For timber harvest.
And we're not gonna be talking about this at the time. We're gonna be talking about timber harvest, and I was just wondering if we were gonna be talking about those speculative changes to the subdivision regulations at that time too.
No, we can do that, but I have a...
We can do that here.
Right, we need that hearing though, don't we? And we were planning, I think it was Dennis's idea to have the hearing for those couple changes I found in the subdivision on that same May sixteenth day, just to get it done.
Yeah.
Because we not, we needed a hearing. And there was, and there was, there was like three or four changes, and one of them, we still wanted to discuss it a little bit further.
Yep, I think the subdivision, we can pick up at a work truck, take a look at that, go through that a little bit. In the subdivision, we don't need to go through town meeting.
Well, we do need a hearing.
We do need a hearing, but...
But we might find more, so when you have the hearing, you can have more comprehensive...
Yeah, so if we, if we pick it up at a workshop and really...
You think you guys are willing?
Yeah, I mean, and you can even be here. You need to.
No, I did come bring the stuff and presented to everyone, and we came up with that we were gonna have the hearing at the same time as the timber harvesting stuff.
I, I know, but...
That's why I just, I'm not sure if we're gonna go through it all again, that's why we...
But what they're saying is we may find more.
I'm not sure you're, you're ready yet.
Well, we didn't really focus on it.
Oh, the subdivision stuff? No.
Wasn't there much that would affect what's coming?
Yes, that was the focus. That's why we were trying to move on quickly.
That was the focus.
Yeah, that was, that was, that's why I looked at the subdivision regulations. Of course I looked, not really, anyway.
And it was also the law firm regulations and, and stuff, and that...
I've got it all underlined. I can just pull it up now if you want.
Pull it right up. I mean, you know, word for penny for...
Yeah, yeah, okay. Very good. I believe it was mostly under the cluster subdivision regulations.
Move the other public hearings and meetings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't need to take too long with this. If we don't want to do it at this hearing coming up, we don't need to. I just, um...
It was January seventeenth minutes, if anybody has that. Did you want to put the time? That Gavin had four items that we need right, right here?
Yeah. It was, um, three of them, I mean, one of them was just those date, the, the best band for practices made of two thousand and six, just removing the date.
Exactly. Exactly.
All that, everyone get, oh, we would be looking at...
I'm looking at the minutes. Page forty.
Yeah, I'm on page forty in the subdivision regulations, I was looking, five A, I was looking to add the word driveways in, says fifteen percent of the areas are locked to account for roads parking and driveways, I wanted to add the word driveways in there.
Right.
Okay, that was the second kinda thing.
On...
What do you got as the third thing?
Well, I've got, on twelve, section three, twelve should state that common open space shall be owned, and the word "be" was omitted.
Right, yeah, right here, yeah, "be" needs to be...
Yeah, we can fix that, yeah.
Okay.
Item fourteen...
Right, and then I wanted to add, item fourteen was the most substantial of the changes, the buffer...
Yeah, buffer along abutting boundaries.
Yep, and we discussed how wide the buffer would be, and I think we, people were kinda jiving with the idea of a sliding scale.
That's right, exactly.
Of one foot per acre, so of the total area of the subdivisions, if it was a hundred-acre subdivision, it would be a hundred-foot buffer, but if it was a twenty-acre subdivision, they would only need a twenty-foot vegetative buffer, and, and that we were noodling with, you know, with max out at two hundred feet or something, or some maximum, and then it would bottom out just in the existing ordinance with the minimum buffers we have now.
Exactly.
Would you count the open space as part of the land for the buffer?
Yes, the buffer could be part of the common open space.
Right, but it...
But it would have to have it.
Yeah, if you had the hundred-foot subdivision, but fifty, fifty acres were buffer, would you call it a fifty-acre subdivision for a fifty-foot buffer, or a hundred-acre subdivision?
Wait, you're saying that a hundred acres, it's got the common space in the subdivision, the bars of the hundred acres, so then they need a hundred-foot buffer with their abutment?
Probably get it a fifty-foot.
I was saying a hundred, because it's just going on that sliding scale.
Are you thinking of the one major subdivision we've looked at and sent to Southern Maine already, would be part of this?
I would, well, that was kinda what brought...
I think that's where I brought it.
It's what brought this to...
We may not accept the application, they have been working for two years without regulations on the plans they've gone.
Well, I guess I...
It would be nice to ask them to have it, but I don't think I would require it myself. Just, just to change your regulations in between...
Midstream.
I don't know, they've been here four times, maybe five or something, to change it on them, I mean, it'd be nice to say, can we get a little bigger buffer, can you, don't cut this, or don't do that.
We don't even have their plan yet, because they have to, Southern Maine region, we haven't got the plan yet, they have to change their whole plan, pretty much, for the three locks in the shoreline zone.
Just down on the shoreline.
And they have to re-regulate their common space, because their stormwater management holes weren't, were included in the common space.
Right, but to stack a hundred-foot buffers on three, four sides of it, that's gonna be huge.
I don't know if that's really...
Well, I, I think we're getting too, too focused on the one subject, that wasn't, the one client, so to speak, that wasn't really what, I was just going with the subdivision regulations and...
Right, but that's my thought, is if we go changing it in front of them, I'm just wondering.
Well, initially, I wanted to move quicker on it, and then Dennis came up with the idea to compile it with this hearing, and then now we haven't moved quicker on it, so we're in a different place, but I'm still interested in the city.
I mean, even if you did this two months ago, would, I don't think it should apply to these individuals. Oh, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to go through the workshop and...
But I feel like we had a better, I just, people were more interested in what I was saying four months ago, or whatever it was, when it brought up, we don't need to go over it anymore tonight.
January seventeenth.
Yeah.
I'm always interested in what you get to say, Gavin, but would that be in the head?
It doesn't look like...
If I was going to, if I came forward and came in here and talked to you guys, that I would like to say, we're in the casino this time, and this is what I'm gonna do, is the plan, is what I wanna do with it, and then, and then you go and you change regulations after you find out that that intended is that, I think that's be questionable in court.
Where's the...
I'm just using the casino as an example, they first up tied, and I gave them the...
Dieback, yeah.
The other side, oh, the agenda, yeah.
All right, well, just a question, you got some wrong information in the hearing on this thing.
I am, it's not one of them, I am.
I still, I still agree with it, what you wanna do.
Yeah.
I think, what we have...
I just know how these things work with the planning board, just kicks, gets kicked down the road, and I've been through this many, many times, with my items being kicked down the road, and I don't have a problem with it, but I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I mean, I'm almost, you know...
I mean, Gavin has tried it, and we...
One second.
You did, can Gavin get a second? Yes, yes, okay, all in favor? Gavin?